Thank you. Good morning. If I could have quiet in the public gallery, please. Thank you. We're now formally opening. Welcome to the our new council meeting, Ipswich City Council, for the 28th of August 2025 at the council chambers. It's 9:01. Around the room, I can see all councillors present except for councillor Madsen, and he has let us know that he will be here in a few minutes. So I'd like to welcome you all. And we also have quite a full public gallery because we do have the presentation of a petition and some public participation, which is fantastic to see. I'll now go on to the acknowledgement of country. So can I? Well, may I ask you to? May I ask you, please sit down, councillor Ternelli? They can now move on to acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We now move on to the opening prayer, and we're really pleased to see Pastor Matt Anstey from the Kruger Baptist Church is joining us this morning. Please come up. Pastor Matt, we'd love to hear from you, what your congregation is up to and lead us into prayer.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor and councillors. Firstly, just a great thanks to you guys for all the work that you do in our city, for our city. I do believe that councillors, mayor, are moving into this role with a great heart for the for the city and desire to see it flourish and grow. It's our prayer too, as a church and as churches, as we pray for the city, we pray for you guys in the roles that you're in and the opportunities you have to strengthen our city. And so we are grateful for all that you do. As a church, this year's been a really great year, really quite positive. We took a team to Papua New Guinea and build a house for a group up there who are caring for mainly women who are infected with AIDS or HIV, heading out in a couple of weeks to Fiji to support a group of children that we help as a church who are deaf. And so it's been really great to do some overseas things. But internally, as a church, as we continue to grow, we've been looking at what's next and we're planning on a church plant next year in Springfield. So that'll be exciting. Just seeing the opportunities of who we are as a church and the type of style that we have seems to be flourishing and growing. So we want to continue that into different and support and help other churches. So that's a little bit of what we're doing. We still come into the city and do some great things with our homeless, and that's been really interesting and eye-opening to continue to have people, especially a little link this last year with St Eddy's coming in as well and handing out meals on Wednesdays with us. So it's really great to be able to see some connections, but also young, young men coming in and seeing some of the needs in our city and how they can play a part of that. So it's been great as a church to do the wider outreach and also internally in our local area, seeing a great growth. But it's a real honour and privilege to be able to open your day's proceedings in prayer. So would you bow your heads and pray with me? Lord God, we acknowledge you as the maker and creator and sustainer of all things. Lord, we know that you made this earth for us to look after and care for, and I'm encouraged by those who are here today who are also wanting to see this, this country, this land, this world be looked after well. And so we pray that you would guide and lead us as we look after the creation, and you've given us this mandate to care for it. Lord, we thank you for the city that we live in and we pray for its prosperity and its growth. We pray, Lord, that you continue to guide and lead the councillors and say, make decisions today, to make decisions that are wise and helpful, that have long-lasting significance and opportunity for this city. And we pray, Lord, as spiritual beings, that we might grow to know and love you, that there might be opportunities throughout our day to be able to thank and glorify you for all the good things that you pour into our lives and pour into this city. We thank you, Lord, for being alive today, for being in this place, for having the incredible privilege we have of being able to breathe this air and live in such a time as this. And we pray we might use our lives to bring forward your mandate to see your world grow, to love and know you. Prayers in your name, Jesus, and ask your blessing upon them this time today together. Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Matt. Really appreciate that. Thank you. Item four, our apologies, and live if absent, and there are none. Item five, condolences, and there are none. Item six, tributes, and there are none. Item seven is the presentation of petitions. And this morning, we have a petition here, and it's a petition made by Ms Jane Cochrane on behalf of the Ipswich Climate Action Group, calling on the Ipswich City Council to declare a climate emergency, achieving net zero emissions for all council activities by 2030, and form a community and council partnership that will ensure a sustainable and livable environment for future generations. As per our procedures, the recommendation is that the petition be received and referred to the relevant council department for investigation and report back to the appropriate committee meeting. And just to let the caller know that there's usually not commentary around the petition, we usually reserve our commentary from when we get the report back. So I move that we do accept that report and refer it to the relevant council area to report back to the relevant committee meeting. Do I have a seconda for that of select councillor? Madam, because you are the chair of the Environment Sustainability Committee. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room. Thank you so much that petition's been taken on to council. Thank you. We now go to item eight, which is presentations and deputations, and there are none. Next, we come to item nine, which is the public participation. And we do have public participation from Jane Cochrane and Val Wheatley from Declare a Climate Emergency. So I ask Ms Cochrane and Ms Wheatley to please come up to the lectern. Under our public participation policy, any member of our community, as long as they're from Ipswich, can participate in this. You have up to three speakers and up to a total of 15 minutes, ladies. So the microphone is on, so I feel free to introduce who you are, your group, and then make your presentation. Thank you so much. And I'll wind you up at the 15-minute mark, or you could finish any time earlier than that. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, mayor and councillors. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Jane Cochrane, and I'm a member of the Ipswich Climate Action Group. We're certainly all about trying to look after this world and to save it for future generations. So why declare a climate emergency? Members of our group have already spoken to the mayor and four of the councillors about this petition. So I just briefly want to recap today to say that the Ipswich City Council, if it declares a climate emergency, recognises the seriousness of the climate crisis and undertakes to review its policies and procedures and practices in the light of the urgency of the situation. Council representing the local community is in the best position to advocate for us to other governments, local, state and federal, and to represent our interests on climate action and resilience. It is therefore well within the remit of the council to declare a climate emergency. 118 other local authorities in Australia have already done so, and thousands of authorities throughout the world have done so. We began this petition about two years ago. We decided to make it a paper petition to ensure that it reflected the local community. We've collected signatures at various public venues and engaged in many conversations on the issue. Over the two years, there's been a noticeable increase in the willingness of people to sign and many supportive comments as people recognise the imminent threat that climate change poses and the threat to future generations. Parents of young children are especially likely to sign. Over 800 signatures on a paper petition would indicate there are thousands within this local community who are very worried about climate change and would really appreciate some leadership from the council on this issue. They would like you to declare a climate emergency. We are appreciative of the work being done by council in developing sustainability policies. We would love to continue to our collaboration with council officers in this area. We would like to see the action happening more quickly because it is an emergency. The main point of this petition is therefore to encourage council to work with other governments to improve planning and protection of the environment. And protection of the environment is a very important part of tackling climate change. We've got an awful lot of development going on in this community, which is not right for the climate. So we'd like to see a lot of that reviewed. And also, we would love to see the council providing leadership to the community. There's so many people who feel lost and confused about the whole issue. So some leadership from our local government would be terrific. Thanks very much for your listening to me today.
Hi, I'm Val Wheatley. I'm with Climate Action Group as well. I've noticed incredible changes happening in the Ipswich area for the last 30, 40 years. So mine is more of an impassioned plea today. We are here today to voice what 822 local petitioners and over 81% of Australians know, we are in a climate emergency. It's only taken us about 200 years to get here to this point. We've got a broiling, flooding, burning, stormy world that is being destroyed by, before our very eyes. Generally, we have found in our conversations with people that, as Jane said, they're overwhelmed and fearful of the complex enormity of what is happening. People are often paralysed by conflicting opinions, debates and information. The result is many of us take refuge in what is familiar, business as usual, and tackling the challenges of modern life. We don't know what will happen next, how hard it will be and who will be affected. Australia has exceeded 1.5 degrees centigrade of warming aimed at by the Paris Agreement. We are actually hurtling towards 2 degrees within the next five years. That's scary. And 3 degrees or more by the end of the century. That's unlivable. The climate crisis and our ever-heating world, it's happening now. It's not happening in generations to come. It's happening right now. It's happening in every part of this planet and to every living thing. It is happening everywhere to every one of us. Scientists are baffled and alarmed by the speed and severity of this climate crisis. We are reaching tipping points that can create uncontrollable climate forces. Ipswich City Council, scientists, governments and good people are taking action, but it's piecemeal and not at the speed and scale to sufficiently mitigate the devastation caused by powerful climate drivers. We need to scale up actions harder and faster if we are to create a livable world and a future. What's not openly discussed and recognised is that so many of us are fearing that rampant climate change is creating an existential crisis, the sixth mass extinction in Earth's history. We are here today to employ the Ipswich City Council to ratchet up its involvement in combating the effects of climate change. Actions need to be part of everything, everyday conversations, connections and community. Ipswich City Council's policies and procedures are aimed towards good governance. And that means to lead by example, to increase collaboration and to monitor and report progress open and honestly. People need to know the truth. The Ipswich community is crying out loud for this sort of leadership and people cannot be what they cannot see. So everything you do, no matter how small or how large, shows what you're thinking about climate change. We call upon this council to have a comprehensive and all-encompassing approach to climate action. If we can tackle this together with open and effective leadership, we can inspire hope and confidence that Ipswich can be a resilient and strong community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I want to thank Ms Cochrane, Ms Wheatley from the Ipswich Climate Action Group. And they've got many of their members here, as well as I think I saw some people from the Wilderness Society here as well in support. Thank you for coming in today and participating in public participation and sharing your insights and your views, but also explaining the petition as well. As you know, from our meetings, our goal is to be a sustainable city and council has committed to reducing organisational carbon emissions by 50% by 2026, and we are on target to meet that goal. Your petition has been received and we refer to the relevant council department. Under our policy as a council, we have three options. Once we have public participation, those three options are: A, that the matter be received and dealt with immediately; B, that the matter be received and referred to a committee or officer for consideration or a report; and C, that the matter be noted and no further action. Noting that this public participation was dovetailed with a petition. I'll move that it's B, that the matter be received and referred to a committee or officer for consideration in line with the petition. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. I'll open up for any discussion from anyone. I think they probably reserve their rights when the report comes back. In that case, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. And thank you very much to the Ipswich Climate Action Group for coming in today. Thank you. We now move on to item 10, which is matters of public interest. And the deputy mayor, Nicole Johnick, has a matter of public interest on the Federal Economic Reform Roundtable submission. I'll hand over to you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to obviously put this on the public agenda. It's self-explanatory, but just wanted to let the people of Ipswich know that, obviously, there was an economic roundtable federally recently and it was highly publicised, but there was input from our region, from the member for Blair, the Honourable Shane Newman, NP. So I've attached the recommendations that he did send to the treasurer from our region. And there's some really obvious ones there, obviously with road congestion and upgrades to main roads and highways that will increase productivity. But there was also some really insightful wisdom that come from the author and philanthropist Everard Compton, OAM. And he spoke of federal and other governments emphasising or fostering the need for intergenerational partnerships, which I found really fascinating because that's when the older generation can either continue in work or come back to work and partner with a younger generation. So their wisdom is not lost in different skills and industries. And it could also assist with businesses that close down in their early years because you've got that guidance, that generational wisdom, and you've also got the experience and enthusiasm from the youth as well. So I just thought that was a really simple but fascinating idea that Mr Compton broached. But anyway, it's all in our papers. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor. We now move on to item 12, which is the confirmation, oh sorry, item 11, declaration of interest in matters on the agenda. Do we have any declarations? See councillor Martin. I have my apologies. I have been told beforehand what it is. So would you mind allowing people to know what that is?
Sorry, mayor, just declaring the same conflict from the committee meeting with regard Brussels Carols. So that's okay. I'd like to. Thank you, pardon. Sorry. Oh, no. No, so David Martin.
You need to be a bit specific. So if you're going to declare, you need to say which item it is for and?
Yep. So on the economic development, item two, with regard major community sponsorship, that's with regard Brussels Carols. So I, David Martin, informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest due to the fact that I used to be on the Brussels Carols Committee. Although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I believe a reasonable person would perceive me to be impartial because I have no funding from it. I've never received any income. I don't get any favour. Therefore, I wish to remain in the meeting and ask eligible councillors to decide if I may participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you on the board or the committee or a close associate?
No, mayor, I stood down a few years ago. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Do you receive any personal or financial benefits from items two, from the economic development?
No, mayor, I get no kickback, so I didn't get any one of those on the committee either.
I appreciate you were a volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Martin?
Mayor, I'm happy to move that he has no conflict.
I'm just waiting for the? Apologies for that. That in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, oh, sorry, my apologies. I move that councillor David Martin participates and votes on item two of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee matter called Major Community Event Sponsorship Brussels Christmas in the Park, because there's no personal financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous noting that councillor Martin did not vote here abstaining. Thank you so much. Are there any other declarations, councillor Ternelli?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, wish to inform the meeting I may have a declarable conflict of interest in item two contained in item 15.4, which is the Economic and Cultural Development Committee report relating to the same matter, Brussels Carols. The nature of my interest is that I was previously a volunteer of the Brussels Christmas in the Park event. And I also note, just for the record and particularly for the chairman, as they move their report, I'll be seeking an amendment. There is a slight change needed to that declaration there. It hasn't been recorded as, I informed the committee. It's just a minor correction, which will be corrected by way of amendment.
So can I just deal with one minute at a time? I just, first of all, I think councillor?
Just thought I'd make that, air that now.
Thank you. So I see there's two. One is, you said you may have a declarable. There's no may. You either do or you don't have a declarable. So you have a declarable?
Yes, I will declare.
And the other part is about the minutes. Is that correct?
Correction. The other part is just to advise the chairman when they move that I'll be seeking an amendment, just a correction to the record. Yeah.
Okay, when that comes up.
When that comes up.
Thank you very much. May I ask, when were you a volunteer? What year it was? Is it recently?
It was a number of years ago. I think I may have been, I may have ceased being a volunteer in roughly 22.
Okay, thank you.
2022 event.
And do you have any?
And as a volunteer, received no, nothing at all.
Do you have any financial or personal benefit from this particular matter? No, thank you. Any other questions of councillor Ternelli? In that case, I move that councillor Ternelli participates and votes on item, I think it's 15.4, which is item two of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, item named Major Community Event Sponsorship Brussels Christmas in the Park, because there is no personal or financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous, and that councillor Ternelli did not vote in that, he abstained. Thank you so much. Are there any other declarations of interest? Just let me know during the proceedings. Thank you. We are now up to item 12, the confirmation of minutes. Are there any questions on that? In that case, I will move those minutes from the ordinary council meeting. In that case, I will move those minutes from the ordinary council meeting on the 30th of June. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any errors, corrections, omissions, amendments? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to thirteen, which is the, excuse me, can I ask for silence? Or if you'd like to direct your queries through the chair? Item thirteen is merrill minute, there is none. Unaffordable business outstanding, and there is none. We now go on to the reception and consideration of committee reports. The first one of these is item 15.1, the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee of the 19th of August 2025. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed, councillor Tully.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number 2025-07 of the 19th of August 2025 for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Madden. councillor Tully, would you like to speak to the report?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just very briefly, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting. We also had a presentation from the officers in relation to the IGO Ipswich Transport Strategy. Very, very comprehensive document. Mayor, it is only a few months ago that we launched the new planning scheme for the city. And this is, by every other measure, as important as the Ipswich Planning Scheme, because it talks about our intentions and our desires over the next 10 to 20 years with respect to transport in our city, which is just as important, because it goes a long way to improving the connectivity of residents to get around our city and those travelling in and out of the city. And of course, one of the important things there is public transport. And there was a lot of discussion relating to that. I commend every officer from council who was involved in the IGO Ipswich Transport Strategy. As I said, an incredibly comprehensive document. But like the planning scheme, it is a living document. It is a document that will be adjusted probably every five years as technology and people's needs and movements change in the future. And it needs to be flexible and a livable document like that, so that we can constantly correct our infrastructure plans and also advocate for infrastructure to be provided by other levels of government. And as we know, that is an enormous challenge. I also speak to the, I think it's item four, the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report, where they, I think it delivered the budget, oh sorry, showed that we had, were, last year, we almost just 3% short of fulfilling our full budget with respect to infrastructure delivery through the year. And I think that that obviously was a very outstanding result in many respects, considering the impacts of tropical cyclone Alfred, or ex tropical cyclone Alfred, and the impacts that had on our community and the delays that had in the delivery of a number of our capital infrastructure projects. So I again commend the staff of AIS for their ability to get through tropical cyclone Alfred and the efforts there and to deliver the budget virtually to the number. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. I was going to go councillor Madden has the second, but he's not here. I'll open up for any other comments and discussions on this report.
I'd just like to speak to items two and three of that report. And I know councillor, you've already spoken about IGO, but it is a really important strategy for us as a city. And we know that by 2046, there'll be around 2 million trips per day on Ipswich roads. And that 85% of these are most likely to be undertaken by private vehicles. So this strategy sets out council's focus on transport as we evolve as one of Queensland's fastest growing cities. As we prepare for the future, we must address the resilience of our transport networks to extreme weather, look at emerging transport technologies and the need to deliver more with fewer resources. Public transport is a key focus of this plan. And while council does not have any control, or it's certainly not the purview of the local government, our extending of our public transport, we're improving the frequency of public transport. We'll continue to advocate strongly to the state government for major road upgrades and public transport improvements. I'd like to acknowledge the extensive community and stakeholder consultation that has gone into this strategy over the past three years, and I think the team's for that work. The Shapet Ipswich page received 7,858 views. And there have been 17 community pop-up stalls for the community to speak with a transport planner, as well as many more consultations with industry groups and community groups. Community feedback helped shape the six strategic directions and 18 approaches, which reflect the diverse needs of our residents for a more responsive transport network. It's my hope that we can use the IGO Ipswich Transport Strategy 2025 as a powerful advocacy tool for attracting state and federal investments, building partnerships with transport agencies, industry and neighbouring councils. I also hope that this will also align with the major opportunities coming to South East Queensland, such as the 2032 Brisbane Olympic and Paralympic Games to deliver lasting transport legacies. On item three, which is a personal tribute in council's open space and road network, and so says with the application of Mrs Doris Jeffrey. And Mrs Doris Jeffrey was a member of the Ipswich Croquet Club for 35 years, holding all the various positions on the management committee, including president. And most of her positions were in a volunteer capacity. Doris was a life member, was also the oldest member of the club. And actually, I first met her when she was celebrating her 100th birthday. And I think she's probably one of our last residents to receive a letter from the late Queen Elizabeth II. I cannot think of a more fitting tribute than a commemorative plaque on our seat at Doris's beloved Ipswich Croquet Club. I'll open up for any other discussion. councillor Tully, any, I don't know, voted against it, any right of reply or summary?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, with respect to particularly item three. As the former patron for the Croquet Club, I did know Doris very well. And, sorry, and I think it's a very fitting tribute to her work, her membership and her time there at the Croquet Club.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 15.2, which is the report of the Finance and Governance Committee of the 19th of August 2025. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed.
Thank you, mayor. I move that Finance and Governance Committee report number 2025, in brackets, zero seven, of the 19th of August 2025, be received. And the recommendations contained therein be adopted. If I have a second, there is an amendment which has been proposed by administration in relation to item seven. But I'd like that just considered separately.
I'll get a second. Is that the deputy mayor saying seconding? Thank you. Thank you, it's moving a second. Do you wish to propose that?
I'll, if that could be put on the screen, because that just came through in the last day or so. It's an amendment to item seven, which I support. But I think it just needs to be clearly indicated what the, some word changes to the report on the committee terms of reference annual review.
Has this been sent out to the rest of us?
I believe it has been. I'll propose that as an amendment. There's four changes. I suppose the one on page seven accounts for calling members, because you can have members of advisory committees who are not councillors. So each of those four, I think, are simple amendments which were being advised of. I'll propose that as an amendment. And if the second is agreeable, that will ease the process of considering the report.
Thank you. councillor, sorry, deputy mayor, you are.
Agreeable, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll let Vicky put up the. So everyone knows what they're voting on. While that has happening, feel free to speak to the report, councillor Tully.
It was a short meeting, mayor, and I don't have anything, except for that amendment, I don't have anything further to add than was discussed at the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thanks, mayor.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, I'd like to speak on item five, which is the procurement of library resources. And Ipswich libraries provide a wide range of free resources for our community, including a large variety of books, movies, TV series, children's DVDs, audiobooks, ebooks. And we are proud to be able to support students and job seekers and lifelong learners with access to the current collection. So it's great to see that our libraries are continuing to be welcoming places and spaces for anyone who enjoys picking up a book and being transported to another world, where they have the opportunity to do so with our libraries.
Before I hand back to you, I'll just make sure that it's all up there. Are you happy with that, councillor Tully? Is the?
Yes, I am, thank you.
So councillor, do you wish to speak to the report?
I believe that councillor Tully covered off on what the amendment was, but it was the matter that I raised during committee about the inconsistencies. With the inclusion of advisory committees, there was a need to change the term or the word councillors to members of committee. Otherwise, there would have been the situation that advisory committees could not have members outside of councillors. So that was an inconsistency that needed to be corrected. And I worked with Wade on that matter, and I'm quite satisfied that the amendments ensure that inclusion.
Yes, yes. No, I did read it last night. Yes, I have no issues. councillor Tully, any right of reply? Or there's been no objection that you should summarise?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you for the comment about the library resources. The libraries were built up over a considerable period of time, stretching from Springfield Central to Rosewood and facilities in between. I think we can be proud as a city. But the community is always asking for additional library resources. And we always keep that in mind. And I'll thank councillor Tully for his usual perspicacity.
I'll look that up.
Thank you. Put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. The next item is 15.3, the report of the Community and Sport Committee from the 19th of August 2025. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed, councillor Madison.
I'll move it as per today's meeting agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. Do you wish to speak to the matter, councillor Madison?
I will. I suggest we take it as read. Nothing's changed since the committee meeting. Some wonderful reports from the relevant parts of the council which presented. And yeah, just take it as read.
Thank you so much. councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to speak to items two and three. Item two is the active and healthy program evaluation. And it's really important when we're spending rate pays money that we do evaluate our programs and see what things are working, what things aren't working, and how we can continually improve. And we have recently welcomed our 10,000th member to the new active and healthy Ipswich app, which makes it easier for people to find classes and to book them. And our community is really embracing the opportunities to become more active as council provided about a 75% increase on the classes and workshops available. More than 31,400 people took part in almost 2,000 free or low cost classes right around Ipswich. So it's great to see that. And I guess we'll continue tweaking that as we see that program grow. Item three was the Ipswich Library Survey Report. And look, despite the expansion of online services, traditional borrowing continues to be the cornerstone of the offerings for our libraries here in Ipswich. And while the growing number of visitors reflects the popularity and value of our library facilities, a positive outcome was overall. Now, I do note a slight decline in the overall satisfaction from 92% to 88%, but I will say they are very high scores. And I think it's important on our journey of continual improvement that people give that honest feedback, well done on that 88% overall satisfaction rating. Some of the feedback that we've got from residents is that there was limited space for seating. People also noticed some poor customer behavior. So when they go to the libraries, they saw some poor behavior from others. And I'm sure it's something that most areas in South East Queensland with all our rapid growth are experiencing. Our libraries must remain a safe space for visitors and staff and make sure that they are welcoming. They're very open places. There is no expectation people will spend money. And, but poor behavior won't be tolerated in our libraries. So it's great to see that they're still increasing in popularity. Any other discussion? I'll hand over to councillor Madison to summarise and go to vote.
I just wanted to thank you, mayor, for your oral summary of the publicly available written report by our officers.
You're welcome.
Which if anybody has further interest, I'd encourage them to read that on the council website.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 15.4, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee of the 19th of August 2025. I'll hand over to that committee chair, councillor Augustine. How would you like this report managed?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Economic and Cultural Development Committee number 2025-07 of the 19th of August 2025 be received and adopted.
Thank you. And I see councillor Doyle has seconded that as the deputy?
And I seek an amendment to that motion with respect to an amendment to the record of that meeting.
Do you want to do that now?
With the indulgence of the chair of that meeting and yourself, mayor.
So what?
Just to, and it was just obviously a relatively confusing, having followed councillor Martin with a similar declaration. You'll note that on page, actually, my pages aren't numbered. But in accordance, it says in the second paragraph of my declaration, it mentions the words, nature of interest is that he is previously a volunteer member of the Brussels Christmas in the Park Committee. I was, the actual declaration was that I was a volunteer of the Christmas in the Park event. So if I could seek the removal of the word member and committee from that sentence.
So that's page 148. And it's the second paragraph. So the nature of the interest is that he's previously a volunteer of. So he's previously a volunteer of the Brussels Christmas in the Park Committee.
Christmas in the Park event.
Okay, so you've changed committee to event.
Removal of the word member and the removal of the word committee to be replaced with the word event.
Thank you. I'll just let Mr Greats put that out.
If that can be moulded into an amendment.
I'll just let that.
Thank you, Vicky.
I think, no, things like that can be done quite easily. I'll just check. councillor Augustine, you're happy with that change? councillor Doyle? No, thank you very much, councillor. I'll now hand over to councillor Augustine to speak to the report.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I'd like to speak to the, well, all of them. In starting item two, I think we had a real robust discussion about the Brussels Carols. Everyone participated, which was really good to get lots of points of view on why we should not take the recommendation, but to, you know, with all of our personal knowledge and experience in the community, we upped the sponsorship from the recommendation of 12,000 to 15,000 over three years. So that was, I think that's a good outcome for our community. And then item three, the Nicholas Street Precinct. I just want to highlight that, you know, with our Nicholas Street, we've actually, you know, punching about our weight, I think, mayor. We've got, you know, a couple of accolades that we've won. The Master Builders of Queensland, Better Future, Melbourne Design Awards, Urban Development Awards. And we've got another one in the pipelines as well that we've been nominated for, which is the Best Public Building or Social Infrastructure Property Council of Australia. So there's a lot of stuff happening in our Nicholas Street precinct, which I think we need to really highlight and let the community know that we've, you know, our precinct is quite amazing. We've got a couple of different offerings opening. I think the community will really love that. Vapianos will be opening soon. The Nautical Bowls opened last month. Hello Harry's is on the scope as well. So yeah, a lot of new offerings in the precinct as well. So I think the team led by Mr Hepburn should be proud of all the accolades and also the offerings that are coming on board. So yeah, thank you for his team and himself. Item four, which is the advocacy, I think we had some meetings around that, the meeting that you chaired, mayor. I think, again, lots of good, robust discussions. I think, again, lots of good, robust discussions, highlighting a lot of our advocacy priorities. So I'll leave more for you, ma'am, to highlight our priorities going forward. So, yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Councillor Augustine? Councillor Doyle as the second of the motion, do you wish to speak to the report? No?
Okay, so I'll speak to, I'll probably just speak to item four as the Chair of the Advocacy Advisory Committee. And we had a really good discussion around some amendments to our advocacy for regionally significant projects policy. The policy now has really clear definitions around regionally significant projects, as well as what a locally significant project is. We also put forward that Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games opportunities will be added to the regionally significant project list. I think we thought that was a bit of a no-brainer. The Olympic and Paralympic Games is the world's biggest event, and we want to be prepared for any funding opportunities that will provide a legacy for the Ipswich community. While the federal state government funding for the new venues has been allocated, sadly not in Ipswich, there will still be opportunities to secure pre-games training venues, investment in sporting infrastructure, increased tourism visitation, and procurement opportunities for local businesses. As it stands, Brighton Homes Arena remains as a venue, as the Ipswich Stadium, under the twenty thirty-two delivery plan, just as it was confirmed in the host documents and in the previous state government review and the current government's review, meaning that our city is poised to play an important role as a co-host event. There's consultation with each of the councillors on what they would like to see added to the list of locally significant projects. There was a really long list with great suggestions. We had kept that confidential because it is quite a long list of parks and roads and things like that. So I think we're going to work together to see how we define that so we can prioritise that better. And we also look at venues that have elite training capabilities of both public and private sporting facilities across the city. And we tend to come up with a list of venues that could be used as training basis for visiting teams before, during, and after the games. And we also discussed developing a team attraction brochure, once we have those venues together to attract elite games training opportunities here in Australia, sorry, here in Ipswich. And we think we'll be in a great position to do that. And finally, we talked about how we advocate when we don't have an election until twenty twenty-eight and how we'll keep those regular communications going, and how we best keep our priorities in front of the state and federal ministers and our local members as well to keep the pressure on to receive funding here. Could I also say, councillor Augustine, you know, as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, I think every single advocacy advisory committee, we've had a number of observers, and I can see there's a notion coming up where those observers will be joining as part of that group. So I think if that goes through, there'll be all councillors, but councillor Tully, there'll be eight of us on that particular advocacy advisory committee. That's the end of my part. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the Economic and Cultural Development Report? Yes, councillor Martin?
I too would just like to concur, ma'am, with you with regard advocacy. I was elected in November last year, and I'm looking forward to our first meeting where we can actually meet with our state and federal members to advocate for our city. I noticed just earlier this week, the Treasurer of the State, David Janeski, just announced a million dollars for a business case up in Toowoomba for an excellence of sport facility. Councillor Madison and I were privileged on Tuesday night, we were invited down to CUSAC to watch a fellow train Gout Gout, watch him go through his paces. It's pretty exciting, arguably the hottest property in Australian athletics at the moment. And he has to travel to Brisbane three nights a week to train, as do dozens of other young athletes in our city. So I certainly would, yeah, concur that we need some state and federal money, and love the idea of us being able to advocate for our up-and-coming athletes, and certainly want to see us have a legacy from the Olympics. So, and just also like to just throw out here at the moment, I'm not sure if people are aware, but Gout will be competing in three weeks' time over in Japan in the world titles. So Di told us the other day, I'm not sure if you know, I didn't know, but he's the fastest man on the planet over two hundred metres at the age of sixteen. He's seventeen, doesn't turn eighteen till the end of the year, and he's potentially competing in world titles. And I think it's an amazing achievement. So I certainly think that young fella, if nobody else, deserves a tartan track in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the people of Ipswich deserve a tartan track. And if I could, I've spoken to Brisbane Lines recently, you know, they have a high performance centre, and they open up to a number of athletes, including Gout Gout, who uses that. So it goes to show that we have the facilities here in Ipswich, they are well utilised. Thank you. Any other discussion on this report? Okay, so councillor Augustine, do you wish to summarise, or we'll go straight to the vote?
Oh, I'll just summarise a little bit, just add to what you were saying about the advocacy, about the venues, as we've learnt that from the Paris Olympics, venues change, venues came on board, all the way up until eight months prior to the Olympic Games there. So, you know, we still have hope that our Brighton Homes will get a Guernsey and get up. So, yeah, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. It's locked in, so that's good. I will go to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point five, the report of the Environment and Sustainability Committee of the nineteenth of August twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, councillor Madden. How would you like this report managed?
I'd like to move the motion that the recommendations be dealt with as a block, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Antonelli.
So my motion is, as Chair of the Sustainability Environment Committee, the Environment and Sustainability Committee, that the council adopt the recommendations of the Environment and Sustainability Committee number two thousand and twenty-five oh seven of nineteen August two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, ma'am, I'd just like to say a few things. I'd like to speak to items two, three, and four. Item two is an item dealing with the two thousand and twenty-five Get Ready Queensland Week. This is a report concerning the Get Ready Queensland Week two thousand and twenty-five, which falls between the sixth and the twelfth of October two thousand and twenty-five. Get Ready Week is an annual statewide call to action, helping communities prepare for extreme weather and disasters. And, ma'am, it's fitting that we deal with this at this time of the year, because last week was SES Week, State Emergency Services. And I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of the, all of Queensland's SES officers, otherwise known as the Orange Angels. And the recommendation is that the report on two thousand and twenty-five Get Ready Queensland Week be received and the contents noted. Item two is the Resource Recovery Strategy and Implementation Plan Review. The report provides a review of the City of Ipswich Resource Recovery Strategy two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and thirty-one, and the Resource Recovery Implementation Plan. The strategy review is a regulatory requirement of the Waste Reduction Recycling Act two thousand and eleven. The report summarises the achievements against the strategy targets during two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. It reviews and updates the strategy with consideration of challenges and opportunities, and outlines changes to strategies and actions to be taken in the next several years. The recommendation is that council approve the updated and new actions proposed within the Resource Recovery Strategy and Implementation Plan Review, and update pillars in accordance with the statutory update of the council's resource recovery strategy. And finally, ma'am, I'd like to speak to item four, which is the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Quarterly Report. This is an update report on the continued implementation of the Ipswich City Council Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive. Following the review of the directive at the ordinary council meeting on the third of September two thousand and twenty-four, as outlined in the report, a significant body of work continues to implement actions against the ten principles of the directive. And the recommendation is that the quarterly report on the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive be received and the contents noted, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Councillor Antonelli is the second. Do you wish to speak to the report?
Yeah, ma'am, I might just take the opportunity as the Chair of the Local Disaster Management Group to just mention item two and the importance for all local residents to use Get Ready Week to prepare themselves for the forthcoming disaster season. And as we saw this year, that disaster season does get longer and longer each year. And we had a presentation earlier from the Climate Action Group, and I would suggest to this council and obviously to the community at large that the climate has been an enormous impact in relation to the number of disasters we have been confronted with in recent years. But also with respect to tropical cyclone Alfred, it showcased to us that disasters are not just limited to this city in the form of flood. It can be storms, it could be bushfire, and of course, as we saw, it could also be a cyclone or an ex-tropical cyclone that could impact our city. So we just asked people, the local residents, to prepare themselves for that disaster season, and Get Ready Week is part of that. And certainly, we hope that everybody uses the information contained on our website in order to put together a disaster pack for their home, their family, and be well prepared should anything confront us during the next season.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli. In speaking to, I'd like to speak to items two, three, and four in regards to the two thousand and twenty-five Get Ready Week Queensland. It's that time of the year where we remind our community to be prepared so they can protect themselves, their family, and their property when severe weather strikes. Get Ready Week raises awareness within the community about disaster risk and to encourage action like making an emergency plan and packing an emergency kit. Information stores will be available in the community between the sixth and the twelfth of October, and disaster information will be available in eleven different languages. Item three, which is the Resource Recovery Strategy and Implementation Plan Review. The council did bring out an action plan back in two thousand and twenty-one, which I think was very ambitious, and it was good to see how that's tracking. As we know, that the waste that we have is not waste that council creates, it's waste that we all create. And in Ipswich, we generate about one thousand eighty tonnes of waste per household on average, and that's for the last financial year. We have faced many challenges in the waste space as our population rapidly grows, the waste levy increases, changes to legislation policies, as well as the constraints we face on existing waste facilities. In the last three years, we have made headway in recovering resources and reducing waste to landfill. However, I am disappointed how far plans for an additional recycling and refuse centre have been moved back, given our rapid growth and that our current facilities are operating at over capacity. We initially had a plan for a new recycling and refuse centre to meet the needs of a growingly, rapidly growing city, but it completed by two thousand and twenty-seven, in that twenty-six, twenty-seven financial year. This review has shown that it won't be completed until two thousand and thirty-one, so that's a four-year pushback. And at the committee meeting, there was much discussion on this and why that happened in regards to, it took an extra eighteen months for the ownership of that land to come to us, and it's still undergoing a number of geotech assessments. Again, I do make my disappointment, four years is a long time, and it does mean that does impact when you see the traffic at Review and Rosewood for our residents. Our waste facility network and waste operations need to expand in line with our rapid growth. Also noted on page seven of the review, that it has a graph showing the impact of the state government's waste levy, and I encourage people to look at that because it's quite frightening. When this review was first introduced, the state government reassured us that ratepayers would not bear this cost. And we sort of took on that cost last year, but this financial year, we weren't able to bear that cost, which is a direct tax to the state government. And the ratepayers of Ipswich will be spending like nearly two billion dollars this financial year to the state, no value to residents. And by two thousand and thirty-four, based on the waste levy that has been projected as well as the rebate, it would be an extra ninety million dollars borne by the people of Ipswich. It's clearly not sustainable, and I stated at the committee meeting that if the state wished to tax the people, they should be doing it themselves and returning the significant levy funding back to councillors to assist us in reducing landfill. Councils will continue to work with the Local Government Association of Queensland, where there's been the tax campaign, but this is a tax that's clearly unfair on the households and clearly unfair on councils as well. Item four was the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive Update. And I see, it's great to the garden organics bins are now being rolled out across Ipswich, with this first month generating an eighty percent increase in materials recovered. So it's a really promising start as we continue. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on the Environment Sustainability Report?
No? Councillor Madison, do you wish to say anything in closing? Okay. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So everyone but councillor Antonelli has? Oh, yeah, oh, thank you. Thank you, it's unanimous. It's been on ten o'clock, so I move that we adjourn for thirty minutes and come back at ten thirty. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden, put that to the vote. Those in favour? Sorry, unanimous except for councillor Madison. For those against, councillor Madison. Thank you, the motion is carried. See you at ten thirty.
For those against, councillor Madison, thank you, the motion is carried. See you at 10.30.
Thank you. Welcome back to the ordinary council meeting of the 28th of August 2025. We've just come back from my 30 minute adjournment, it's 10.30 in the morning and all the councils are present. We are now up to item 16.1, which is the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for July 2025. So I'll move that report. Do I have a second for that? Thank you Deputy Mayor. In moving this, I just note some of the highlights of this report, that the historic Tallagalla Cemetery has received a $2.3 million upgrade and expansion, ensuring this very picturesque cemetery is well maintained and able to service the community for generations to come. It is really beautiful and they've done a really great job. With the new sections now completed, an additional 311 burial plots and 156 in- in-urnment plots are available in the garden and they have been created. Over the, another highlight was the Ipswich Civic Centre. Over the past 50 years, the Ipswich Civic Centre has hosted thousands of performances in the George Togger Auditorium. In fact, Council Augustine and I were there again last night with Bethany Luther and Primary School, having their, I think it was their first musical, Finding Nemo Junior there last night. It's great to see our community come together and support the 50th birthday celebrations. That has supported so many emerging and established artists over five decades. It's also good to see the new traffic lights turn on at the front of Westmoreton Anglican College, which has improved traffic flow, and also the 120 metres of footpath that has improved pedestrian safety. I also join with councillors Madden, Augustina Madison and Purgas, as council signed the city's first voluntary conservation covenant. Some of our city's highest value environmental areas are on private land, and the voluntary conservation covenant is a way for councils to draw with landowners to protect native flora and fauna. So we met with Sam and her family on her property at Purgas, and I want to thank her and her husband and the family for their commitment to the local environment and protection of the koalas, echidnas, sugar gliders and other wildlife on their property. And it was also very, to see that their neighbours were also very keen, so we'll see what happens there. councillor, deputy mayor, as the secretary, do you wish to speak to the report?
Um, no, I just have some questions.
Yes, okay, sorry, I didn't ask people to ask questions.
No, that's okay.
Questions of the CEO?
Um, yeah, it was just in relation to one of the items under the current significant matters. It was the citywide safety inspection of footpaths. I'm just wondering if that has concluded yet, because it did note that it was taking place July to mid-August. Has that concluded?
It's my understanding it's concluded.
And do we get a report on what the findings were and what the areas were that were inspected?
Don't have a report yet, but certainly that's the intention, absolutely, to gather up that information. So if you'd like that, can certainly provide that, organise a briefing, whatever you'd like.
Amazing. And how were the areas selected?
That I don't know, but yeah, that can certainly be covered in the same briefing and report.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it didn't open up to see if anyone would like to ask questions of the CEO. I'll open it up now. Any other questions for the CEO on this report? No, thank you. I'll open up. Do you have anything you'd like to comment, councillor, deputy mayor? Open up for any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. I too want to just speak in relation to that safety inspection on footpaths, and that's referenced on the bottom of page one of the report. One of the big problems around the Springfield development is the fig trees that have been planted years ago. They're totally unsuitable in, certainly in the environment of being on footpaths. Mainly these have been put in by the developer, Springfield City Group, in years gone by. And, and either there are no root guards or the root guards have failed in, in many cases. The footpaths are kinked up. In some cases, you'll see by 20 or 30%, you know, a third of a metre, you know, perhaps sometimes. And it's sort of dangerous for pedestrians. It can cause pedestrian accidents. It's a trip hazard. And I think that's one area when the, when the report comes in, hopefully that's, that's been looked at, because it's costing a king's ransom in cases to reinstate these, put in root, root guards. I understand the, from what I've been told by a former CEO, that the Springfield City Group wanted these trees because they're evergreens. They reminded the developer of Singapore, where, you know, and around the area of the airport in Singapore, they're permanently green. But there are permanent safety hazards in Ipswich's eastern suburbs, and I trust that this inspection will, will support what I'm saying, and also look to whether or not, even with root guards which can eventually fail, whether or not they're appropriate in, in the suburbs of Ipswich.
Thank you, good point. Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor?
Just on that, thank you councillor Tully. So I think that was the intention of my questions, particularly around the Nightingale Health Precinct in Springfield Central. So there's a hospital obviously getting built and there is schools and there's a, a vejo and a retirement village there as well. And I've noted a few elderly people on east mobility scooters actually crash because of the root issues and the elevation, so the footpaths are already elevated. And then if the roots actually cause issues underneath, then it can make it so that, you know, it can be quite unsafe. So that was one of my big concerns in relation to some of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's nothing else, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 16.2, the quarter four annual plan 2425 quarterly performance reports. So it's the final performance report for the financial year 2425. Any questions of the relevant council officers? No, in that case, I will move that this report be received and noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. In speaking to this, this quarterly report looks at April, 1st of April to 30th of June, and it shows a quarter of council's deliverables as completed and a further 70% on track. The adoption of the Ipswich plans, the city plan 2025 and the LGP now complete, and the strengthening Ipswich Communities Plan is now in the implementation phase. The 2022 flood recovery review recommendations have been actioned and the urban green planning issues for the year have been implemented. I want to highlight the activation of our sporting fields enables it at 93% capacity, which is pretty incredible when you look at the wet weather that we've had. And that means we've had 56,105 hours where community is making use of council sporting facilities. Councillor Doyle's the secretary, do you wish to make any comments on this report? I'll open it for other discussion. No discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. This is the monthly fonets report for the period ending July 2025. Would you like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this report? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you Deputy Mayor. I remember that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending 31st of July 2025 be considered known by council. And speaking to this, actually I don't need to speak to them, I think it's, it's the first month in, so it's pretty self-explanatory. So I don't have any other, any comments to make. Deputy Mayor?
I'd just add one comment in relation to the higher than budgeted spending on the wages and employer, employer, employee expenses. Given it's the first month of the financial year and that's already over budget, it's just something that we need to, I guess, highlight and watch carefully. And it, and obviously that's stated in the risk management implications of the report as well.
Yeah. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. The next item is 16.4, which is the Ipswich City Council, Council Committee Meetings Calendar for next year. We do try very hard to accommodate it, so it doesn't, if we have a committee meeting falling on an important day. So this has been put forward to councils, I think, over the last month or two. I understand feedback has been incorporated. So any questions on this, on this calendar? No? In that case, I will move this. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. I don't have any feedback, oh sorry, I don't have any comments to make on this item. Nothing from, any, from anyone? I think it's self-explanatory. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We have three notices of motion today, which is lovely to see. The first one is a notice of motion for some additional councils to join the advocacy advisory committee. It was submitted by councillor Jacob Madsen, so councillor Madsen, I'll hand over to you to, to manage.
I've moved the motion and hopefully get a second now.
The motion is that the council prove the inclusion of the deputy mayor Nicole Johnic, councillor Jacob Madsen and councillor Andrew Nelly as members of the advocacy advisory committee. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Martin is, is seconding that. As the mover, councillor Madsen, do you wish to speak to it?
Look, not to, no need to speak to it to a great deal. The motion's self-explanatory. So just going through the processes to be appointed, that's all. Nothing major.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Yes, I'd concur Mayor. Thanks.
Councillor Andrew Nelly, I notice that you're on that list. You're, you're all okay, happy with that? Okay, you're welcome. Okay. I haven't had a chance to discuss it with, with the, none of you have rung me to talk about it, but I welcome you. I do note that at, at each advocacy advisory committee, that I think most of you are there. And hopefully this will make the meetings run a bit smoother, because I sort of have to hear from the members first and then go to the observers. So hopefully this will make the meeting flow a bit smoother and I'll welcome you aboard. Any other discussion? Councillor Madsen is the mover. Do you wish to say, wish to say anything in closing? No? Let's put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item 17.2 is a joint notice of motion from myself and the deputy mayor. And that is for the deputy mayor to participate in the council of Mayor South East Queensland International delegation for the 2025 Asia Pacific Summit, City Summit and Mayor's Forum in Dubai. So I'll move that and obviously, deputy mayor, you'll second that. In speaking to, this is off, is on every sort of second year and is offered to the mayors of South East Queensland. And the, the travel and the accommodation someone is at no cost to, to council. So it's coming to you not for an approval for spend, but an approval for the delegation for someone from council to go. Under the, whilst it is a mayor's forum, comsec do allow the alternative director, which is the deputy mayor, to attend. So I don't wish to attend and the deputy mayor has indicated that she'd like to attend. I know it probably ties in nicely with your role as, as the RDA chair as well, so strongly support this. And I'll hand over to you, deputy mayor, if you wish to make comment.
Thanks Mayor. I am excited for the opportunity. It, it came about, I was talking actually to Mayor Tanny Milligan from Lockyer. So there's a number of South East Queensland mayors and deputy mayors that are attending as well. And I think it's a great opportunity to participate and to represent Ipswich at really minimal costs. So I really do like that. And I will look forward to reporting on any outcomes if I'm given that opportunity. Thanks Mayor.
Fantastic. Any discussion? Just like to read, I guess a paragraph in the, in the motion that, that the international delegation, that the, the flights for cost accommodation, registration, in delegation transfers are provided for. And then the council is required to cover the cost for travel insurance and I guess international roaming on your workplace devices and, and things like that. So I think it's a good investment. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. The third notice of motion is from, a joint notice of motion again, from the deputy mayor Nicole Johnic and councillor David Martin in regards to sporting events in the city of Ipswich. I'll hand over to yourself, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll move that one and...
Do you wish to read it out or?
I can, sorry. I just, I've got a second, so I just wanted to...
Okay, we'll get the second for, I'm guessing yourself councillor Martin. Thank you very much.
Um, so I just wanted to amend, if the second agrees, sorry, recommendation to, to read that council engages with Queensland Raceway through a councillor briefing session to ascertain what's... that council engages with Queensland Raceway through a councillor briefing session to ascertain what support it may be able to offer to secure and or support Ipswich as a venue in the 2026 Supercars Championship calendar.
Just make sure everyone can read that.
If the second...
Could I check if the second is happy with that amendment? Uh, microphone?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you very much. It's all up there. If you'd like to speak to it, Deputy Mayor?
Um, just briefly, you know, we are a, a city built on racing and car enthusiasts, I believe. I might be a bit biased there, but I think that, you know, Supercars coming to Ipswich again in 2026 and having someone like Tony Quinn at the helm of Queensland Raceway is just a great opportunity for economic stimulus for our city and in to highlight us on a national scale. So whenever I see in the Supercars advertisements from the previous rounds, that was just at Queensland Raceway, Ipswich was right there underneath their name and that was televised everywhere. So who doesn't love that? And yeah, that's, that's it. So it'd be great to get everyone together with Queensland Raceway to facilitate some discussions on how we can assist.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, councillor Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with councillor Johnick's sentiments. Tony Quinn's done a lot for the track out there, spent millions of dollars and I think it's certainly appropriate with supporting him. It was a little disappointing this week in the paper. Craig Lanza was almost having a go at councillors, just said he'd like to see local government support the Supercars event. It's not locked in for next year at the moment. So I think whatever we can do to support that to happen would certainly be good. As councillor Johnick alluded to with regard to our city. So, and I believe that we should be looking, as you brought up once before, Mayor, about Champions Way, fixing the road up. I'd love to see the Willowbank Precinct, the Ipswich Motorway Precinct, being the premier racing, motor racing precinct in Australia. And I would like to see it, yeah, worthy of that title. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it for other comments? No, just I'll be, so, um, I'll, I'll be supporting this notice of motion. Obviously the deputy mayor and I and our husbands were up there all day on Sunday of the Supercars to, to see that. And, and I guess I've been very passionate about Champions Way for, for a long time. So I think this is good. And I think you've already started working on some dates that they'll come in in October to discuss things. So thank you very much for that. Any other discussion or Deputy Mayor, do you wish to make any other comments in summary?
I just remembered something.
Councillor Augustine?
Oh no, it was really nice to, yesterday, myself, councillor Doyle, councillor Antonelli, we got to meet Todd Hazel Wood. So that was quite good to see him up in close and personal, also to hear his story.
For the road safety?
Yeah, for the road safety and just seeing his story from where he started as a, I think he was like a three-year-old getting his little, little go-kart and where he's come to now. So, and yeah, and winning Bathurst last year was really good. So that was a little bit, and he's just down the road. So yeah, I think this is a good motion.
Thank you. Thank you. And they'll hand over to the deputy mayor, anything?
Photo or it didn't happen? No, only joking. No, I've got nothing further to add. Thanks Mayor.
We'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and passed. Any, I didn't come across any questions on notice. Just checking. Just before we close, I just thought I'd make a little bit of an announcement. I wish to advise everyone that I'll be taking some leave as mayor. It'll be my first time in five and a half years. So I'll be taking some leave from this Sunday, the 31st of August to the 21st of September. The deputy mayor Nicole Johnick will be acting mayor. So thank you very much Nicole for agreeing to take that on. So she'll be the acting mayor during this period with council business continuing as usual. So I thank the deputy mayor for her willingness to take on the role of acting mayor during this period to ensure the smooth running of council while I'm on leave. So thank you. And I think you'll have lots of fun things with a citizenship ceremony, the launching of galvanised and quite a few, many civic celebrations and ceremonies as well as other meetings and other stuff that probably people don't see. So thank you very much for taking that on.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to add, I need to thank my husband in advance for ironing and cooking. Thank you.
Yes, very, yes. And taking photographs. Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll close the meeting at 10:50. Thank you.